I'd like to welcome everybody to the October Pitt County Planning Board meeting. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I will ask our, Ms. Auten to call the roll, please.
Fred Austin. Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck. David Davenport.
Here.
Madison Downing.
Here.
Brad Guth.
Here.
Lyman Hardy. RJ Hemby.
Here.
John Landrin.
Here.
Steve Little.
Here.
And Charles McGlaughlin.
Alright, so it sounds like we've got one new planning board member here. Madison, welcome. And we'll get you sworn in here in a few minutes. Tab with the two other planning board members, new planning board members contacted and planning to be here?
Yes, sir. Charles McGlaughlin is online with us. I think he's just muted.
Okay, got it.
And all the members have already been sworn in at a planning board orientation this week and last week.
Perfect, thank you so much. Now if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now hopefully everybody will have gotten the minutes from the September meeting. They certainly, the meeting certainly looked a lot more organized on the paper when I read that than it did when I left the meeting. So I appreciate that, Ms. Auten. If there are any questions or corrections to the minutes, please let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Don't move, Mr. Chairman, RJ Hemby. Thank you, Mr. Hemby.
Second, David Davenport.
Second, thank you, David. Now, Ms. Auten, if we could have a roll call, please.
Fred Austin.
Approved.
Don Brown.
Approved.
David Davenport.
Approved.
Madison Downing.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
RJ Hemby.
Approved.
John Landrin.
Approved.
Steve Little.
Approved.
And Charles McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Auten. The minutes of the September meeting have been approved. Our next item on the agenda is our public addresses to the board. Ms. Auten, did anybody sign up to speak to the board?
Not public addresses, only to speak on behalf of the development review.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. We'll move on to administrative matters with number five of swearing in a new planning board members. And I understand that's been completed already. We have Madison Downing, Lyman Hardy, and Charles McGlaughlin.
And I believe Mr. Gooby is going to take over from here and lead you on through the swearing and election of officers.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to share my screen real quick here. Want to make sure everybody can see that.
Looks good.
Alright, as you mentioned, we do have three new appointments. Want to recognize them, Mr. Charles McGlaughlin, Mr. Lyman Hardy, as well as Ms. Madison Downing. As Tab mentioned, we did bring them in last week. Mr. Hardy and Ms. Downing came in on Friday, and Mr. McGlaughlin came in yesterday. Were they to get a planning board orientation session so they could learn what the board does, what your roles and responsibilities are, and what we do with the plant department and what we present to the board. So certainly appreciate them. And as part of that orientation, they were already sworn in as well.
Perfect.
We also had some reappointments to the board. Mr. Don Brown, and Mr. David Davenport, and Mr. Steve Little, were all reappointed to three-year terms. So they'll be with us on the board until 2024. And I also want to take a second to recognize our outgoing members, Mr. Tucker Moore, Ms. Maria Roderson, and also Ms. Fay Barefoot. If you recall, Ms. Barefoot, her term actually expired October of last year. But because that seat had remained unfulfilled, she continued to serve in that position for the last year. So we thank them all for their service and certainly wish them well. And so with that, Mr. Chair, we do need, since we do have a full complement board now, we do need to elect new officers for the year. And with that, I want to turn that over to Jordan Smith so he can handle that.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Eric. The planning board's rules of procedure do require that election of officers occur at your October meeting. And also, so need to elect a chair and a vice chair. And also, James Rhodes needs to be appointed as the executive secretary to the board. As far as chair or vice chair, any member can nominate him or herself or any other member of the board to serve in any of those positions. We can proceed out of the board would like. We can handle election of chair and then vice chair. Or if there's a slate of nominees that someone would like to submit, we can vote on those. It's really up to the board's desire for that, unless there's any, are there any questions for the board, any nominations?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions from board members about the process? Alright then, I will accept any nominations at this point for the chair and vice chair positions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
How many that we maintain the current chairman and vice chairman and adjutant and director for the next year?
Okay, we have a...
Second.
Second.
Alright, we have a quick second to the motion to keep the existing slate of officers, our chairman and vice chair. And are there any other nominations?
Close on the, on the two said names, Mr. Chairman.
We have closed the nomination by Mr. Hemby. Now, do we need to do a roll call vote, Mr. Jordan, or mean Jordan Smith?
Well, I understand Mr. Hemby made a motion to, I guess I would, given where you have this voice vote requirement, if there are no other nominations, I would simply recommend that the board just vote on the nominations that have been presented. There's been none other offered. I'd have a voice, I'd recommend you have a voice call vote on the nominations that were submitted.
Okay.
You could have a vote on a motion to close the nominations. Given there are no other nominations made, I don't think it would be necessary, but I defer to the chair.
Okay, well, we'll just go ahead and move into a vote on the slate of officers, or slate of... So Ms. Auten, if you would do the vote for us, please.
Fred Austin.
I approve.
Don Brown.
Approved.
David Davenport.
Approved.
Madison Downing.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
RJ Hemby.
Approved.
John Landrin.
Approved.
Steve Little.
Approved.
And Charles McGlaughlin.
Approved.
Alright, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our development review of Abbott Trail, item number seven on our agenda. I appreciate all the feedback and input that we've gotten from some of the neighbors for that property. It was a lot of information and as, because I spent a lot of time looking over it and reading it. So I know it was a lot of time to put it together, and I appreciate that. But we'll get, turn it over to our staff. Is that going to be Jason or Mr. Gooby?
Jason.
Thank you.
Me, Mr. Chair, thank you. Alright, up for development review, we have Abbott's trail preliminary plan. This plan was presented at the September planning board meeting. The plan was disapproved and has been resubmitted with information the board requested regarding soil types and septic layouts. This proposed subdivision is located on Abbott Farm Road, east of its intersection with NC 903 South. In the Aiden Township, consists of sixteen lots, twenty-six point one acres, and the owner's pork swamp land LLC. This is a general overview of the area. A little closer shot there. This is the plan presented. And looking a little closer at this plan. Note the southwest bypass there on the right. They have their open spaces required. And also landscape buffer along Abbott Farm Road. This is an example of the hammerhead configuration. This will be built in CDOT construction standards and meets the subdivision ordinance requirements for private streets. There'll be a non-access easement along these lots. The site is on RR, twenty-five thousand square foot minimum lot size. Four new streets are proposed. Electricity is provided by Greenwood Utilities Commission. Water service is provided by Bell Arthur Water Corporation. The conditions and requirements on this plan. Pitt County planning and erosion control plan will be required if more than one acre of land is disturbed. The private street section must be constructed in CDOT standards and will require private street maintenance agreement. A homeowners association will be required for the maintenance of the private streets. A landscape buffer will be required along Abbott Farm Road. Lot 1A must meet the access requirements for public or private right of way. The street construction and right of way must meet the requirements for private streets and the subdivision ordinance. No stormwater VMPs are required due to the nutrient loading to be below the maximum loading requirements for nitrogen and attenuation calculations not showing more than a ten percent increase in peak flow volumes from pre to post development. Stormwater permit shall be valid for a period of two years from the day of issuance unless the validity permit has been issued and maintained for the site or the stormwater permit has been revoked by Pitt County. If after two years the permitted activity has not begun nor a validity permit secured, this permit shall expire. All land purchases and transfers necessary to secure the property for development shall be completed prior to the issuance of this permit. The development of the track shall proceed in conformity to all plans, design, features, and restrictions submitted as part of the stormwater permit application and kept on file by the Pitt County Planning Department except that the Pitt County Stormwater Administrator may approve minor changes consistent with the approved plan as required by field conditions in accordance with Section 15G of the Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for Nutrient Control. If any amendments are made to the approved plan, revised stormwater calculations must be submitted to the Pitt County Planning Department. NCDOT will require the following statement. The proposed names named roads are not designed to NCDOT standards, will be privately maintained and not eligible for NCDOT acceptance into the state maintenance system. Pitt County Environmental Health Septic Systems must be approved prior to final plot approval. Greenwood Utilities has approved this plan, and Bell Arthur Water Corporation will supply order to propose subdivision. School districts are Aiden Elementary, Aiden Middle School, and Aiden Griffin High School. The Pitt County Emergency Management approves this plan. This is a view looking across the site from Abbott Farm Road. Another view again, looking across Abbott Farm Road from the Holy Woods Road intersection. And another view of the site looking down Abbott Farm Road facing west. This is a view down Abbott Farm Road showing adjacent property. Another view showing the current site conditions. The technical review committee has recommended conditional approval. And the information submitted, soil information, was provided to the planning board and shown on the plat. Here I have color coded just to give an example from what the board requested as far as how the septic systems are laid out. What I've shown here in this color code is the different soil types color coded that are on the plat that was presented in the agenda package. And these are the house envelopes. If you notice that the primary area and the repair area are both positioned over the A and B soils. And I took these lots here directly out in the middle of the subdivision. And I believe Angie is on the line too to talk a little bit about how the process would work going forward. Angie, your, your office.
Yes. So, so my office will, once application is made, my office will take whatever preliminary is submitted. If it was, for example, this preliminary that is submitted for the application of the house envelope for the number of bedrooms. And we will actually go out there. This professional design work is just a preliminary design. This is just, we look at this as, this is where they would like the septic areas to be. But this is not the end-all-be-all of where septic will be. This is where we start evaluating. There's a number of factors that go in, but this is just a proposal. But we ultimately determine where septic will go, what type of system, and the ultimate layout of where the septic will go, the ultimate layout of actually whether the lot lives, whether the lot needs to be changed, the house needs to be changed. So again, this is just a preliminary. We look at professional consulting work as a tool. But we know that those lines of the soils map are just a tool, they're not exact. So that, for example, the A soil could, you know, end or be short of that repair area, or it could go further of that repair area for lot 10. Again, so we just use it as a tool. Our ultimate in-field evaluations are what we base our septic design on. And we can only do that in field once we have applications in hand.
Thank you, Angie. Adjacent property owners have been notified. Staff has received emails and phone calls in regards to the proposed development, wishing to review the plan and overall design, wishing to attend the meeting and submit comment. And the letter that we have received is from Starren Wood, and I'll read that letter into the record now. Dear board members, my name is Starren Wood. I'm an adjacent property owner adjacent to the reference proposed subdivision. I wish to submit my continuing comments and questions in this letter and presentation. I want to quickly revisit the soil types for the board members that were not present in last month's meeting and for new members that are starting tonight. I use blue beam technology to color code the different soil types as produced and shown by Aston Soil Works Incorporated. On the preliminary plat, see Exhibit A, you see that twenty-two percent, twenty-two point nine percent of the total square footage of the proposed tract of land is type C soil, mound system, mound septic system, and forty-eight point one percent is D solid, unsuitable for septic. That is an alarming seventy-one percent of the available square footage of land they want to develop. I strongly urge you to recognize that virtually half of this tract of tract soil is unsuitable for septic. In a letter to Chad Browns, the developer dated March ninth, 2020, Exhibit B, Gene Aston of Aston Soil Works Incorporated states that some areas should be expected with preliminary soil types, preliminary type soil suitability maps due to the distance between borings. A further look at this map showing his findings attached with his letter states in a note at the bottom of the map, soil borings conducted approximately two hundred feet spacing. When you look at a color coded map, lots one through eight and fourteen through sixteen clearly show slivers of type of C, B, and A type soils that are less than a hundred foot wide. Clearly, if borings were in fact taken at two hundred foot intervals, then changes in soil type on his map couldn't be any more narrower than two hundred feet. On lot one along the map shows a change in soil types, type three types times in less than one hundred and fifty feet span. There would be no way that this map could be, could show three soil types changes in a hundred and fifty foot when borings were taken every two hundred feet. If it turns out that lot one is all type D soil, then that would render it unbuildable. I recognize and respect that the soil report that has been provided to us was prepared by a licensed soil scientist. However, I think it would be responsible to ask for clarity on this finding. Exhibit C shows a picture taken from the second floor of a house that speaks for itself. There are pictures of lot one of the proposed development. This is what type D soil does when it gets wet. When proposing to develop poor soil, it is critical that a soil map be presented to this board for consideration, be more accurate, especially when municipal sewer is not available. Regarding sewage management, this board turned down this proposal at the last session due in part because they wanted to know more about the subject. Exhibit D is the revised preliminary plat that has been resubmitted to make the map easier to decipher. I have color coded the primary areas of concern. House locations are shown in orange, primary nitrification fields in green, repair nitrification fields in pink, driveways in blue, and both new private roads and existing groundwater lowering ditches in yellow. Based on the soil investigation provided, which we know and have been told isn't very accurate, six of the sixteen lots either require preliminary mound nitrification field or mound repair nitrification field. There's a property not far from our house on North Store Road which has a mound nitrification field, see Exhibit E. Speaking for myself, this type of sewage management system is extremely risky and unsightly. In fact, it resembles above ground mass graves, see Exhibit F. You may also notice that the builder installed an AC unit on a wooden platform to raise it out of potential standing order. The house sits on type C and D soil and was shown as such on the plat submissions. The board and technical review committee saw that the information yet approved it anyway. I'm not proud of what this says about our county, I trust you aren't either. As you can see by the explanation in the email from Environmental Health, Exhibit G, poorly drained soils with fairly limited suitability for dwelling are very limited for septic systems. This will pose very serious drainage and waste management problems that will only worsen over time. The soil type will never change. Building houses and pouring asphalt and concrete will never add to the existing stormwater and groundwater issues, but will also negatively impact the soil's ability to accept sewage effluent. Other impacts surrounding homeowners like myself could be severely additionally affected by drainage disruption this project will present as explained above. Environmental degradation could occur as the septic systems wear out or become overwhelmed. My concern is the F1 water will find its way to the significant drainage ditch that runs beside my house, and this could impact ecosystems, both domestic and wild animals, and find its way to continue accrue. The proposed land is just a poor choice for development. And I've spoken to the farmer that previously tended this land for years. He stated that this land is naturally wet. Potential home buyers who would not be privy to this information provided in this letter all too often don't understand or subsequently don't realize that these issues until it's too late. Not to mention it will only take one night, their first night in their new home, to realize that the high volume of noise pollution that Southwest bypass produces. Those new homeowners in lot six through sixteen will be affected most. I used a new calibrated digital sound level meter and took sound level readings approximately six hundred foot from the bypass. I found passenger vehicles yielded about sixty decibels while eighteen-wheel trucks can yield up to seventy-five decibels. While taking these readings, an eighteen-wheeled truck veered off slightly off the road and hit the warning strips and yielded eighty decibels. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency states recommended residential noise levels range from forty-five to fifty-five decibels. My questions regarding this proposed development are as follows. There is an existing groundwater lowering ditch that helped with draining this tract. A, will these ditches remain? Will they be modified or will drainage tile be installed? Who will maintain these ditches before and after the homeowners move in? If the answer is the homeowners, these large ditches cannot be maintained with a battery-powered weed eater. It will require a bush hog. We all know that won't happen. There's an existing ditch that severs lots one through seven that divides front yards from the back. Will the homeowner have to build a bridge across to gain access to the backyard? Please paint a picture of how this will work. The existing homes in the immediate surrounding areas are custom-built on a crawl space with proposed houses being keeping with this. The preliminary plat shows a riparian buffer. Explain what this is. Why does lot one show its repair nitrification field fifteen hundred feet from the house? How would you cross the existing ditch with the force man? If the primary mound fails and the homeowner must use lot 1A, how will they get dump trucks and other heavy equipment back there to perform the work? Keep in mind, as houses are built and sold, planting fences and other obstacles may be likely blocking kind of access to lot 1A. As shown on my color-coded revised preliminary plat within lot six and seven north of the groundwater lowering ditch, I have shown an area that I call a natural marsh. It is an area that stays wet a large majority of the year. The late Cleve ever tended this land for years, recognized this cloud around it, never using it because it was too wet. However, the developer addressed this. Reasons why I think this tract of land should not be developed. Poor soils is the cornerstone of ill-advised housing development. This will certainly be angry homeowners because they live in an area with bad soils that shrink and swells, causes degradation in private roads, septic systems, and foundations. This will result in limited areas for children and pets to play, a comfortable environment. Unsightly risky mound system, lot one, which shows a primary mound system sits roughly fifty foot from Abbott Farm Road. It will be in full view of everyone that can see it as they drive by, understanding how likely it is that it will leak at the tow locations corners. It scales forty-five foot from the lot number two's front porch. That will not be a pleasing thought from lot number two. There are six lots that repair area have to be mound system. Unsuspecting buyers will not understand the enormous cost of building the repair network. Most families don't have this kind of money saved, leaving them with a large unexpected expense. All this because of bad choice for development and municipal sewer is not available. If municipal sewer does become available, eight of the sixteen lots would have to cut and repair private road access and they want to tie in, increasing their cost of lots. One through seven have a large ditch that severs in their backyard unless they pay extra to have a driveway access installed. They will not be able to access the entire back portion of their lots. Many of these go unmaintained and will become an overgrown unsightly mess. The existing ditches will not be properly maintained and within two to three years will not drain properly. This will cause poor drainage problems to become worse for them, me, and my current neighbors. Lot H, which has the same ditch that runs parallel to lot one, leaving a portion of their lot inaccessible. This is ridiculous and upset. Lots nine and 10 place an unusual shape law, unusual shape to their backyard thanks to 1A, repair mound for lot one. Assuming that lot 1A belongs to lot one owner, lots nine and 10 owners will certainly not maintain this piece of land. By the time lot one's primary mound system fails and it will, the primary, the repair areas will have fifteen to thirty-foot ponds and hard woods growing on them, driving the cost of the repair mound even higher. Lot 1A will not be accessible to heavy equipment trees, bushes, fences, and storage sheds will have to be removed and relocated to get back there. And because the soil is already bad, once the path is cleared, the yards will be destroyed. Because heavy equipment will need to build repair mound for lot one, can't get back there, neither can fire trucks. The lots of 1A have almost two thousand foot of ditch bank to maintain. I trust that there is no one in this meeting that thinks that they can even try to do it, much less actually do it approximately four hundred foot of the ditch bank as adjacent to my yard. Unmaintained ditches don't Unmaintained ditches don't drain properly. The natural marsh on lots six and seven. The noise pollution generated by the Southwest bypass will be so bad that on lots fourteen and sixteen, there will be a constant turnover for these homes. Houses in this particular developer, Grimes Built Construction builds are mostly slab on grade spec houses, spec homes. The other home on Abbott Farm Road between the bypass and Highway nine oh three, including mine, are custom built homes on crossface. What he builds is not in keeping with what is out here now. The existing drainage ditches that crisscross the plot of land that are critical to the drainage of this tract as well as that of mine and my neighbors. They are so big and deep that they simply will not be maintained properly. This will only add to the already existing poor drainage problems that we experience now. The only way that these ditches can be properly maintained is with a tractor and an articulating bush hog. Private roads have a history of not being maintained. Many times, small HOAs do not anticipate these calls and proper maintenance won't be performed. Similar mistakes have been made all around us in the past where someone's desire for short term gains allowed development to occur in poorly suited areas. The legacy of these involved is that they allowed this to happen. Many will suffer and few will benefit. I strongly urge you to recall that the business, local government, is to watch out for the public interest. Some potential unsuspecting home buyers don't possess the knowledge and experience that you have as decision makers, leaving them vulnerable for home buying choices. To project, to project them is the function of government. In fact, it's very foundation soul legitimacy. Private interests are in charge of private interests. I hope that this planning board will keep the public interest obligations in mind since the interests you are accountable to and none other. Don't allow family, social, or other relationships to influence your judgment or lend to the prestige of your seat on this planning board to advance the private financial gains of one or two individuals. Sincerely, Stiren Board. And now we'll take questions from the board.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charles McLaughlin. I have some questions.
Yes, sir. And are these for Ms. Manning or are these for Mr. Bryant?
These are for Mr. Bryant.
Okay.
I want to ask Mr. Bryant, Mr., the writer of the letter included exhibits, which, many of which were photographs. And for the benefit of the record and, and the benefit of our board, I want to ask him to go back and identify each one of those exhibits and tell us what it is. Beginning with exhibit A, now, if it's a letter from somebody to somebody else, I'm not asking for that. But with respect to the photographs, I would like for him to explain what those photographs depict.
Mr. Bryant, do you have those images?
Yes.
Can we show them?
Mr. Chairman, can you see that?
Say you.
Here we go.
This is the presentation that was submitted by Mr. Wood. And this is the letter that was submitted by Aston Soil Works. Would you like for me to stay on this slide?
Uh, well, I would, I would ask you to read the third paragraph on page two, which is a very short paragraph. It's one sentence, beginning with the areas designated. Would you just read that sentence?
And you're referring to the statement in a letter to Chad Grimes, the developer dated.
Sorry, just that, just that one sentence.
March ninth, twenty twenty.
The, the, on page two of the letter dated March ninth, twenty twenty, I'd be glad to read it. It says the areas designated as D were unsuitable for septic systems in their present state. This was due to soil wetness at less than twelve inches from the natural surface based on soil morphology or ditch setbacks. And Mr. Bryant, how, what percentage of the property is D soil, if you know?
Um, that information was not provided to us typically in the preliminary stage of the plan. Um, the, the soil report is not a requirement. Uh, the soils were shown on the flat, but that other information was not provided.
And you, what, let me ask you this, Mr. Bryant. Excuse me, I'm sorry, what?
This is Stiren. Type D soil is forty-eight point one percent of the total square footage.
Okay, forty-eight, thank you. Forty-eight percent is D, which is unsuitable. Now, I just want to ask you, Mr. Bryant, have you ever seen this property before?
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay, now, the, the landowner chose to, chose to call this property Fort Swamp Land LLC. Uh, would you say that Fort Swamp Land is accurately descriptive of this particular tract of land?
I don't think that I could accurately make a statement based on that.
So you haven't ever seen it yet? Well, either you know it is or it isn't. I'm just asking you a question.
I'm not aware that it's swamp land.
You selected two lots from the center of, of the mound and you said they were A and B type soil. What about the soil suitability of the rest of the lots? Do you know what that suitability was?
The suitability of each particular lot?
Yes, sir.
They showed, uh, as the, shown in that report there, uh, B, one, A, C, and D. It looked like the house envelopes were placed on a majority of C and D soil and that the septic systems appeared to be generally on the B and C soils and A soils.
Okay, so the house envelopes themselves, the majority of them were on C and D soils.
I would have to look at the plan to necessarily state that as a majority.
Okay. And let me ask you this question. We were given an outline before this, uh, before this hearing started, and I want to ask you to go to the subdivision and ordinance. And on page twelve, have you got the subdivision ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Go on page twelve and go to paragraph G and read the second sentence for me of the subdivision ordinance.
And you said section E on page twelve?
Section G.
G. The preliminary flat, written condition requirements and comments and a recommendation from the technical review committee shall be then forwarded to the planning board for consideration. The planning board shall approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove of the flat.
Yes, sir. That's far enough. So it says then that the planning board shall approve, conditionally approve, or, or disapprove the flat, but it doesn't say that the planning board doesn't have any discretion, does it? Does the subdivision ordinance say that the planning board doesn't have any discretion?
I think that would be a better.
Pictures.
Mr. McLaughlin, I think that would be maybe a better question for our attorney, Mr. Gordon, to speak to.
I'll ask him. Okay. Let me ask Mr. Bryant to finish the rest of the pictures.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Now, exhibit C, is that a fair and accurate description of what reports represent?
Sir, I, I don't have a background in soil science, so I, I don't know that I could state that that accurately is depicted one way or another.
But I believe if, if I remember correctly, Mr. Wood in his letter said that that was the V from the second floor of his house onto lot one. I believe that's what he said. And of course, anyway, go on to the next one, please, exhibit D. Now, what does exhibit D show?
That shows, this is Stiren. Uh, I simply highlighted the home envelopes, the primary and repair areas, and I also highlighted the existing ditches. Uh, also showed in a, in an area, um, just plan north. Uh, I believe it's, uh, area about six and seven, there, of that natural marsh that I mentioned in my letter that Mr. Bryant read previously. That's the area that just rarely dries up and the farmers just don't try to farm that. It's, it's a bad spot. But it also, also highlighted lot one A. Um, that is the repair mound. It'll have to be a mound, uh, apparently. Um, and I want to say that that repair mound belongs to lot number one.
Well, you'll have a chance to explain all that. So just tell me about the rest of the pictures, if you would. Like, what does exhibit D reflect? And what is exhibit E? I'm sorry.
That is the mound system, uh, with the house that I spoke about in my, my letter on North Store Road. That's just what it looks like.
Is that a house that somebody lives in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I knew one.
All right, how about the next exhibit?
That's a above ground grave. Looks similar to the mound system to me.
So, okay. What about the next exhibit?
That's simply a statement from, uh, our health department helping me understand what the nomenclatures meant. A, B, B one, C, and D.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't have any more.
We didn't show, we didn't show, uh, exhibit A, uh, Mr. Bryant. That, that's the, uh, the plot plan that I use blue beam, blue beam to highlight the different soil types. The yellow is D, the C is C. Those two total seventy-one percent of the total square footage of the propos, the proposed tract. That's seventy-one percent.
Are C and D soils, as far as you know, considered to be suitable soils to build on? As far as you know?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you have any other questions?
No, sir. I don't have any other questions of Mr. Bryant. No, sir.
Uh, any other questions from the, from the board of Mr. Bryant or Ms. Manning?
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Landrin.
Um, I, Ms. Bryant, I mean, Ms. Manning, I believe you said earlier that the, the spots right now that are picked out for the, uh, the septic tanks or, or where you would, they would like them to be, but not necessarily where they will be.
Yes, so, so our evaluations determine the ultimate, what type of system is going to be there, um, where the system will be placed, the size of the system, um, and ultimately whether or not they get sixteen lots. Again, this is just a preliminary plan. Um, they, you know, it very well may be that they don't get sixteen lots because we can't get septic for sixteen lots. Um, again, it's very common in subdivision and when we do our evaluations that they can't get septic, um, where they want. They can't get septic for the size of bedroom that they want, or they can't get a septic system, um, that they want. So, for example, um, we may not agree that it's going to be a mound system. We may say that it's going to be an aerobic drip system. Um, I will also remind the board that there is the private option. The general statute does give authority that, um, we are not the only way that developers can get septic permits. They do have three other options that they can get, um, private permits written outside of the health department. Um, you know, outside, um, of us. So, um, if they don't go through the health department and the county, that they do have private options. They can have an engineer write their septic permits and they can have their licensed soil scientists now write their septic permits by passing the health department and the county for septic.
That was part of my, that was part of my, the next question was basically what options are there if they're not going to be where they are? What?
Right, so, so, so what we do is when we go out there, we look to see where they want things. Um, and we start evaluating. We decide where the best system is going to go on the lot and we decide what's the best layout and the best type of system. We're going to write a permit for a system that we feel works best. Um, the developer may want one type of system and they may propose that on their preliminary flat, but my gentlemen or my inspectors, when they go out there, they're going to look, um, with actually the conditions and there's a lot that goes into septic design. Um, so soil wetness conditions are definitely one, site conditions are one, microtopography is another. Um, so there could be other conditions that, um, square footage is another. Do we have enough square footage, um, based on easements, buffers? You know, we've got to stay off the ditches a certain amount. Um, so there's a lot that's going to go into the septic design here and there's going to be a lot of creating factors. You know, this is going to be, um, they want everything kind of front of the lot in the front area of the ditch. Um, there's a lot of stuff we've got to take into consideration, utilities, water lines, everything like that. So, again, this is the preliminary of where they want the septic, with the type of septic that they want. Um, but ultimately, we would go, we would design a system. Um, we would give our proposal to, back to the developer and the owner. Um, if we couldn't give what they wanted, then they could choose to either change, change this to the preliminary flat. Um, if we couldn't give them all sixteen lots, um, or they could choose to write a private, uh, a private option permit. If they didn't like what the health department, um, agreed to or designed.
Thank you.
And do you have any other comments or questions or, or for the staff? Yes, Mr. Austin, thank you for raising your hand.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a question about the process of, there is a, a requirement that no fill can be used on the land. How does that apply to the berms, I mean, or the mounds, I'm sorry, uh, that are covering the septic fields? Is that not considered fill on the land?
So that's specifically for, um, during road construction, when they start cutting roads, that's kind of the statement that as they go in to develop and make those roads, that they don't use the spoils and put, put the spools and for storage over those areas that would be designated as, um, those septic areas. Um, so it's not necessarily in reference to if there was a mound designated mound criteria. It's more towards that construction period. There's spoils or fill material that needs to be brought in for construction of roads, curb and gutter, that kind of thing, that it not be stored over the, um, designated septic areas.
And then to change, to shift gears a little bit away from the drainage issues, the driveways, some of the driveways are butt directly on the property line to the proposed road, quote unquote, road. Um, i- is there any requirements in the ordinances to, uh, have the, that driveway a certain, meet a certain standard so that the homeowner can at least be able to get to and from their home?
Yes, Mr. Austin, the reason for that design, I'll actually run back real quick. So the reason for this design, uh, where you see there in blue is that blue actually joins that particular lot there. Uh, our subdivision ordinance in section one forty-two requires access to a public or private right of way. And so each one of those lots has direct access to that public or actually private right of way in this situation. And that way they will never have to cross anyone else's lot or use an easement to gain access to the private street that has an NC DOT driveway permit to Abbott Farm Road. We'll have to pave this like an NC DOT street.
I also have one other engineering question. Um, the soil type C and D, is, are they suitable and permissible to be used for home foundations?
That, I would think they've. That, I would think they would be, considering that the house envelopes are placed on those. I think the foundation engineering there, how the house itself is actually built may be determined based on those soil types. And I know that the C and D is not necessarily the actual soil type, but just a classification on the type of septic system.
Okay.
So hard ground probably wouldn't support septic. You know, some of the more sandy's or flat land, but would be okay.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff, Mr. Bryant or Ms. Manning? I have one question in terms, Mr. Bryant, in terms of soil types in the subdivision regulation, there is no requirement for any type of subtypes in the, soil types in the document, is there?
No, Mr. Chairman, there's no requirement.
So a lot of what we're talking about is are things that we don't have any specific requirements or rules or technical standards for, correct?
That's correct.
And finally, in terms of the, Mr. Wood's letter that we read into the record earlier, was there, I know this, this, this Technical Review Committee reviewed the preliminary plat. Were there any of the items that he outlined in that section about why he thought they shouldn't develop those properties? Were any of those things regulated in our subdivision ordinance?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I do, Ms. Auten, do we have folks to speak to this item?
The only one that is online with us is Styron Wood.
All right, Mr. Wood, would you like to speak to the board regarding this?
Yes, I would.
All right, well, you have five minutes.
Thank you. During your last meeting in September, six brave members of this planning board voted against this horrendous development proposal. That night, you were asked to vote three times, as I recall, because Mr. Rhodes thought you were confused and didn't think you knew what you were voting for. But I believe you did and you held your ground. He then asked you to cite your reasons for turning it down and I believe you said septic and drainage issues mostly. That prompted the designer to display a hand-sketched plat showing the house locations, septic primary and repair areas that only served to create more questions than answers. They really tried to get you to change your vote, but you held true to your instincts and common sense. Through an email exchange that I've had with Mr. Rhodes in recent weeks, I learned several facts that I would like to share with you concerning the approval process. When asked how many times has the TRC rejected residential development proposals once the planning board approved the preliminary plat, he informed me that in recent history, he was not aware of any TRC disapprovals of construction plans. So this grease, it works like this. Number one, if this planning board approves or even conditionally approves this revised preliminary plat tonight, it will trigger the Pitt County Environmental Health Division to perform individual lot evaluations. Remember, if you approve or conditionally approve. Number two, then the Health Department performs the sole investigation. If acceptable, even if it will require multiple unsightly and risky mound systems, it will move to the next stage. Number three, the designer developer will produce a construction plan. Number four, the Technical Review Committee would then take over the review of the construction plan, not this board. Remember what Mr. Rhodes told me. He is not aware of any TRC disapprovals of construction plans in the past. So the one and only chance to vote your conscience and your common sense is tonight. If you have been limited and/or restricted to only verifying tech, technicalities, why waste your time being on this board? In essence, what they have done is given you a gun with no bullets, a title with no authority. They are essentially asking you to check your brain at the door. Remember, Mr. Rhodes confirms that if it gets past this stage of the review process tonight, apparently one hundred percent of the time, it gets approved and built. The planning board asked for more information last month. So this was revised. So this revised preliminary plat has been submitted. This plat certainly provides more requested information, but all they really accomplished is that through this resubmission, they have only magnified the deep and lasting problems that this ill-advised development will leave behind for me and my neighbors. They have brazenly put this obvious bad development proposal in front of you, me, and my neighbors. To me, they are essentially daring us to challenge it. And they are fully expecting this board to not recognize the obvious and do the same thing that others before you have done. And that is to turn a blind eye to it and rubber stamp it. I call on this new planning board tonight to send a message to the development community. That message should be, if a developer makes an ill-advised, uneducated choice of land to develop, this planning board will not consider it unless municipal sewer is available and drainage issues are addressed and enhanced. Prove tonight that you have the knowledge and experience to see the obvious and subsequently you will look beyond technical requirements and call on your gut instincts and common sense to protect the citizens of Pitt County. I respectfully ask you to reject this proposal tonight. But don't stop there. Do the morally correct thing by telling the developer designer to stop spending money on this proposal. Because it's a fact, this soil will never change and continued resubmission of the preliminary plat cannot change that or your vote. In closing, I invited Mr. Tom Colson, who is one of my district county commissioners, to come to my house to observe this land. He ultimately stated that until such time as municipal sewer is available to this community, this project should not be attempted. I'll submit this to the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Are there any questions for Mr. Wood from any of the planning board members?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Little.
But I do appreciate the background, the research that Mr. Wood has done in making his presentation. I did learn something tonight when Ms. Manning was speaking that maybe I should have been more diligent and should have known already. But when she mentioned that if by chance we approve this and it moves forward, it comes to them that if, for instance, you plan at eight percent as far as where septic would be and the developer chose not to go along with their information or their direction, that they could go to a private soil scientist and get some information there. There again, it bothers me. I guess you folks know, this proposal bothered me at the last meeting and I do, and am aware of the guide that our county attorney presented to us and shared with us and realized that we have certain boundaries that we have to go. But I'm not willing to be a rubber stamp something that happens to an unknowing property owner down the road and he gets stuck in, what we're told, by the name Fork Swamp without any advantage to his new home. So that being said, as we get ready to put forth a motion or a vote, we just need to let, I think, our conscience be our guide. But I'd realize too that the county attorney may want to share some other words of wisdom with us before we move forward. But I don't like the idea of us being held to a point that if something smells like a duck, walks like a duck and all that much, it's not a duck. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
I have a comment.
I have a motion, may I make a motion?
Mr. Davenport.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clear something up. Couple of references been made to the Fork Swamp. I don't think that, that is not the name of the development. That is only the name of the LLC that is, owns it. But that is not, that doesn't have anything to do with this parcel of land. Just wanted to clear that up.
There's a correction on that. This is the only land that Fork Swamp owns. Fork Swamp LLC is the owner of this land. So if the owner formed an LLC, he called it Fork Swamp. And the reason is because that has geographic appropriance.
I'm not sure that's correct, Mr. McGloughorn.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Guth, this is Styron.
Just one second, Mr. Wood, you had your time. I'm looking for somebody else.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, just one minute.
I had several questions in my letter and I got no answers. Who's going to answer my questions in the letter that Jason read tonight?
If I recall from reading the minutes, Mr. Wood, and Mr. Bryant can certainly correct me. I believe the engineer from the developer answered those questions at the last meeting, unless there were others added this week.
I just think it's appropriate since there's new members.
I see Mr. Pavolota is on the call.
I'm here.
Would you like to add any insight to that?
To?
Any of the questions, or Jason, could you put the questions back up?
I think you're right because I answered most of them.
I remember reading it in the minutes, but again, we did have people that weren't here at the last meeting, although they did receive the minutes as well with those questions answered from you in writing.
There are some questions that were not on the last time, Mr. Guth.
Okay, thank you.
Which one specifically?
Mr. Wood, can you share which ones? I'm trying to look through my minutes in terms of the ones that were answered.
Why does Lot 1 show its repair mound, notification field, plus or minus fifteen hundred feet from the house?
Because that's where the better soils are.
How would you cross the existing ditch with a force main?
You put a pipe in the ditch and you put force main under the stormpipe and you pipe the force main all the way to over there.
Explain that, you put a pipe in the ditch.
You put a stormpipe, basically put a twenty linear feet of, say twenty-four inch pipe that, and then you cover it up. Basically gets you level with the top of ditch bank and then you would put a force main under the stormpipe, basically get you a free foot of cover.
Mr. Pavolota, this is Charles McGloughorn. If you cover up the ditch and put a pipe, how does the ditch drain the surface soil, surface water that it's designed to drain to start with?
Before you answer that, before you answer that, if you would please be recognized by the chair before you speak, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Mr. Pavolota, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pavolota, how, how do you, if you cover up the ditch with dirt and put a pipe in it, how do you drain the surface water that is on the land?
I mean, same way like on DOT roads, you build a house, you put a stormpipe in a ditch, you put your driveway. I mean, it still drains to the ditch and then it just, a portion of it goes through the pipe.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. Does, does the footprint of the house increase the impervious source, surface of the soil? Do you have more impervious surfaces because you build a house and you've got a driveway and a roof?
Yes, you do.
You do, okay.
Mr. Bryant, does our subdivision regulation have anything to do with impervious surfaces? Is there a regulation on that?
Not specifically the subdivision ordinance, but our soil erosion and sediment control would address this. And if they disturb more than one acre, then they would have to apply for a permit and our office would monitor all land disturbing activity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I say this? If I understand it, he, you know, there are ditches on this land that have drained it for probably a hundred years or maybe more than that. And if you eliminate those ditches, I, I would assume, and you add impervious surfaces, I would assume you increase the pressure on whatever drainage you're trying to accomplish. But anyway, starts out with bad soil.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Guth, this is Styron. His answer was that you would put a drainage tile in the ditch. The force main crosses this ditch perpendicular. So if he does that, he will stop the drainage of that ditch.
No, you won't. I mean, if that was the case, then none of the DOT ditches would flow.
Maybe we don't understand your answer.
I mean, take a example, for example, your house. Initially, it was a ditch in there. So you put a stormpipe in there, then you built your driveway and, I mean, the ditch still drains through your pipe.
Yes, I understand that, but this force main crosses this ditch perpendicular, not parallel.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to say is that you would put your force main under the stormpipe perpendicularly to, in order to get your, in order not to drop it too low below the central end of the ditch, basically.
All right, now, now I understand.
All right, any other questions from planning board members for either the public or the applicant?
There's also question number six that was not answered, Mr. Guth.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, can you read number six? I had not.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As shown on my color code of revised preliminary plat within Lot 6 and 7, north of the groundwater lowering ditch, I've shown an area that I call, called a natural marsh. It is an area that stays wet a large majority of the year. The late Cleve Everett, who tended this land for years, recognized this, plowed around it, never using it because it was too wet. How would the developer address this?
Mr. Pavolota, do you have any insight into that? Think he's either muted or didn't hear the question.
Someone muted me, but I said that he could fill the, fill it in or basically install a swale and drain it out to the roadside ditch.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did he say you would fill in the natural marsh? Is that what he said? I want to make sure I understand that because this is very important.
Yes, sir.
Fill in the national marsh, that's important for me to know.
Yes, it's a.
Okay, yes. All right, so I would like to, if there are no further questions, I would like to go back to Mr. Jordan Smith to remind us about the process for administrative decisions. And I know that, I also would like to comment on a characterization of the folks that voted for this preliminary plat in terms of our public service. I think we are also trying to do the public service and represent the public interest here. But sometimes there are no rules that regulate the concerns that you have. And in order to not be arbitrary and capricious in terms of our decision-making, we have to go by the rules that are given to us. And it's my understanding that items like drainage- And, um, it's my understanding that, uh, items like drainage, lot density and septic systems, as well as traffic, those are things that, uh, our current subdivision ordinance does not, do not regulate. Now, if the Board of, uh, County Commissioners, uh, would like to take up, um, adding those regulations to the subdivision ordinance, they are the, uh, rule makers and the technical standard providers for us to make decisions by. Um, but we, I would certainly love to see that property, uh, maintained in its current, uh, state, uh, and have, uh, development happen in other areas. But again, we're voting based on what the preliminary plat, um, rules are from the subdivision, uh, ordinance. So, Mr. Jordan, if you could, um, elaborate or, uh, give us the, uh, standards again for you, I would appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you. Um, just like to begin by saying, uh, I'm sort of as legal advisor to this board. Um, I, I'm not the decision maker. I can only make a recommendation to y'all. Uh, with that being said, I would like to remind members of the training I provided in April of this year and for those new members, uh, your orientation recently, our subdivision ordinance is a, uh, sets out a administrative process. And that's if the standards are met, then the applicant's entitled to the permit. Um, to some comments made earlier about, um, what discretion the board may or may not have, um, state law enabling legislation for subdivision regulation. And I'll quote here, and this is general statute one sixty D eight oh one, quote, "Decisions on approval or denial of preliminary or final plats may be made only on the basis of standards explicitly set forth in the subdivision ordinance." And so, once again, we're at the preliminary plat stage. Um, what's required on the preliminary plat is spelled out in section one fifty-one and section one fifty-five of the subdivision ordinance. Uh, I won't go through those in, in detail with y'all, um, but suffice it to say, things like soil types, uh, drainage, uh, erosion and septic are not required on the preliminary plat. And just if I could address this, this statement about why do you exist? Why do you review these if you don't have discretion or not? Governments, uh, including the county, are allowed to set up their subdivision approval process in different ways. Uh, some, some places staff approves preliminary plats. Some places the governing board approves preliminary plats. In some places, the appointed planning board approves preliminary plats. All those methods are allowed. And I will say this also ties into a conversation this board had a number of months ago. Um, I will say that, uh, subdivision reviews do not require any type of public hearing or public comment. Adjacent landowners aren't required to have notice under state law. You recently recommended that they be required to have notice under the subdivision ordinance, and that was our practice for many years. Um, and then, so, some members may say that it creates this situation where people, members of the public come forward and express these concerns. Um, I, I think we tried to point that out to y'all when we were discussing that this summer. So that kind of creates the situation that we're in. Um, but just to recap, it's administrative review. Uh, you have to consider only the standards in the ordinance. And, and from my view, there's been many things discussed about that are outside the scope of at least the preliminary plat review stage. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions any members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith from the planning board? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny the, um, preliminary, uh, plat that has been, um, submitted.
This is David Davenport. I'd like to make a motion to approve, please, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Mr. Davenport to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Question from Mr. Smith.
If we could, if we, Mr. Wood, we've already closed the public portion of this, uh, meeting and we're voting and we have a, uh, a motion and a second. And now, is there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. Auton to do a roll call vote for approving the, um, preliminary plat submitted.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask each board member that when you vote, can you please say approve or deny? Fred Austin?
Approve.
Don Brown?
Deny.
Naomi Buck called in, Mr. Chairman, and her audio will not connect. So she asked me to relay to the board that she does approve the preliminary plan. David Davenport?
Approve.
Madison Downey?
Approve.
Brad Guth?
Prove.
Line, uh, RJ Hemby?
Deny.
John Landrin?
Deny.
Steve Little? Steve Little?
He's muted.
Can we get him unmuted?
My apologies, deny.
Okay, and Charles McGlaughorn?
Deny.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, it's five to five. Five approve and five deny.
All right, Mr. Smith. Is that, is that the motion fails?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a different motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny, to deny the application. Charles McGlaughorn.
All right, we have a motion from-
Second, Don Brown?
McGlaughorn and a second from Mr. Don Brown. Is there any further discussion on the motion? This is to deny the preliminary plat request.
Okay, again, can we get approve or deny when I call your names? Fred Austin?
Deny.
Don Brown?
Deny.
Naomi Buck approved. David Davenport?
I deny the motion.
So he approves of the plat. I think we've got.
Point of cor, point of correction, I think, Mr. Chairman, if you make it clear what it means to, my mo, my motion, in other words, if it's approved or denied, would you please explain to the board?
If you're going to approve the motion, I believe our secretary asked us to say deny, because you're denying the preliminary plat and that's trying to keep it straight. So let's start the vote again, if we could, Ms. Auton. So if you are approving of this motion to deny the preliminary plat, you're going to say deny.
Okay.
And if, understood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No.
Fred Austin?
I deny the motion.
Don Brown?
Deny the motion.
Okay. David Davenport?
Deny.
Madison Downey?
Deny.
Brad Guth?
Deny.
RJ Hemby?
I deny the plat.
So you approved the motion to deny?
Right.
Okay, John Landrin?
Deny.
Steve Little?
Approve.
Charles McGlaughorn?
Prove the motion. Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think some of the members are still confused.
I was gonna go, have we got to through the end of the, um, vote, roll call vote, Ms. Auton?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask the board, did anybody vote differently this time than they did the first time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Was that correctly done?
This time we had seven that stated deny and three that stated approve the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want you to make it clear, please, that to approve the motion would be to deny the petition.
Yes, yes, sir.
Which was the way I voted, anyway.
That's the way I voted.
Right.
So if you wish to approve the motion to deny the preliminary plan, please state approve. If you wish to deny the amendment, please state deny. Fred Austin?
Deny, denied.
Okay, Don Brown?
Deny.
David Davenport?
Hold up, Mr. Brown. That was different than your original vote, right? Tab?
No, sir, his has been denied the entire time.
No, no, it wasn't.
He wants to approve.
What's approved?
He wanted to approve the motion to deny, is what I understood.
Right.
So currently the motion is to deny. If you want to deny the motion, if you want to deny approval, say approve. Right? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
All right, Fred Austin?
I still deny.
Okay, Don Brown?
I will make sure I'm correct. Uh, approve, that will be denying it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ap, approve means you want to deny the preliminary plan?
Yes.
Okay. David Davenport?
Deny.
Madison Downey?
Deny.
Brad Guth?
Aye.
RJ Hemby?
Prove.
John Landrin?
Going to deny the plat by approving the motion.
Okay, Steve Little?
Approve.
Charles McGlaughorn?
Approve.
Okay, so, one, two, three. Five to five.
Mr. Chairman, I, and I, I have some, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to raise this or not, but I have some unease. Um, if Ms. Buck is not able to join the call and express her vote, I'm not sure that we can honor some type of written or emailed or text or however. It's just, you know, if we were in person, um, person would have to be there, so I.
I, I understand that. So, um, Mr. McGlaughorn, would you like to make your motion again? And, uh, we'll do a final roll call without Mrs. Buck's input. I believe Mr. McGlaughorn is muted, I'm sorry.
Yep, yes, sir. Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. My motion, Mr. Chairman, my motion is to deny the application and I request approval of that motion to deny.
Thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Steve Little seconded. Ms. Auton, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
And we are leaving Ms. Naomi Buck out, correct?
Correct.
So this is to approve denial of the preliminary plan? Fred Austin?
No.
Don Brown?
Deny.
Prove, don.
You approve?
Prove, prove.
David Davenport?
Deny.
Madison Downey?
Deny.
Brad Guth?
Deny.
RJ Hemby?
Prove.
John Landrin?
I approve the motion to deny.
Steve Little?
Approve.
And Charles McGlaughorn?
Approve.
So that is five to approve denial and four to disapprove.
All right, the motion to deny the preliminary plat passed. Plat has been, uh, disapproved.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, to, this is more addressed to Mr. Smith. When, when our reaches of this board extend beyond our mandates, um, repeatedly, is that, how does that, is there a, a possibility of dissolution of the board? I mean, what, what consequences, you know, we've, you know, gone beyond our administrative abilities?
So I, I'll, I'll, I'll speak, uh, specifically, I guess, to, uh, first, this denial, the, uh, developer has potential legal remedies that he may choose to avail himself of, possibly. As far as dissolution of the board, is that possible? Yes, uh, well, no, the, to have zoning, we have to have a planning board. Um, different members could be, um, uh, I think it's within the board's discretion with, with move members, but I, I really not prepared to address that. Uh, but the, specifically, there's potential legal remedies available to a developer. Uh, subdivision ordinance allows for appeal to the Board of Commissioners. I think there are some other possible remedies as well, um, but I'll leave that to them to pursue.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. All right, so we have, uh, the final item is informational items. Mr. Gooby, are you gonna run through those for us real quickly?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pull my screen up here real quick again. Hopefully everybody can see that as well. Um, just a few informational items. First is the, the redistricting of the Commissioner voter districts as we, as James has talked with y'all before, um, based off the, the decennial census, the most recent one here, twenty twenty. Uh, and the suggested voter redistricting based off changes to the population in the county. Uh, there were, the, the commissioners held two public hearings. The first was on September thirteenth and the second one was on October eighteenth. Uh, staff had presented a, a second option of the, the redistricting map to the commissioners based off some of the comments that, uh, were received at the first public hearing. Uh, the commissioners did adopt the original option. So that first option that was presented at the beginning, they, they have approved that, uh, and that is, uh, the new, new voter district map for the county. And you see, there's a, uh, link on the screen that leads to a, a website on our, or a site on our county website that provides a lot more information, provides the, the copy of the map. Uh, and if anybody's got any questions about those voter districts, they're welcome to contact our office and we'll, we'll give them that information. Uh, there are two requests for Compute North. You've probably seen this in the news recently. Uh, Compute North LLC, as you recall, a couple of months ago, uh, they had requested a text amendment that came before this board, uh, to add data processing facilities, large scale, to the zoning ordinance as a permitted use. Uh, it was added as, as a special use. The commissioners had approved that text amendment. Uh, and following that amendment, they also submitted a request for a class one special use permit to operate, uh, out, to, to establish a site out of Bellworth School Road. Um, the commissioners did hold a, or they opened a public hearing or an evidentiary hearing on Monday night. Um, a lot of concern, a lot of information, uh, presented to them by some of the, the people who live in the public. Um, and that was a lot of, lot of concerns, particularly with things like noise. Um, and so the commissioners actually continued that hearing. They didn't approve the permit that night. Um, they've continued it until November first. Uh, so they will be bringing back some more information to the commissioners for that request and they will be considering it that night, so. Last thing we've got in your packet tonight, you have our departmental monthly report, as well as any kind of various correspondence and articles. And I'd like to, uh, say that James, uh, offered his regrets that he wasn't able to attend tonight. Um, so leading me to step into his shoes and try to fill some big shoes of his, but, um, hopefully he will be back next month to, uh, to lead the board through the, through these processes. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything else for you tonight and be happy to, uh, Uh with that, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything else for you tonight and be happy to uh answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby, are there any questions for Mr. Gooby? All right, now hearing none, um I want to uh welcome again Ms. Downing and uh Mr. McGlaughorn to the, to the board. Um they aren't usually this exciting, but uh as you can see, we all get along uh together, even if we have differences of opinions and we're all doing public service to serve on the board and do the best uh try to follow the best interest of uh our community, so uh if uh nothing else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hemby, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, yes, I want to say, I want to say something, yeah. I want to congratulate uh our chairman for doing a fine job and uh to Carol. I really appreciate you being in those shoes tonight. And also Vice Chair, congratulations, and also Mr. Roach. So uh we look forward to uh some more fun, B.
Thank you very much for those kind words, sir. Motion, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
All right, Mr. Little's motion to adjourn and if I'll have a, a voice vote of acclamation for the adjournment, we'll go. All right, I hear it, let's go, we're out.